Do we have any declaration of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, we will proceed. Business arising from the minutes. We have the motion at item three A by councillor Soever. And I'll maybe just get a mover to put the item on the floor. Councillor Soever, you would like to move and seconded by councillor Bart Nicky. And I'll acknowledge you councillor Soever.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yes, as you guys all know, I'm a new mayor and so when I got to be mayor, I started looking into how things work. And one of the things that I found that really doesn't work is the way the MPAC billing is handled. When, as you can see from the motion here, when the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation prepares the bill for Gray County, it bills its services to Gray County under the MPAC Act using a formula which basically equally weights the number of properties and the assessment in Gray County. So what it does is it says, okay, what is the percentage of Ontario properties in Gray County? And what is the percentage of Ontario assessment? It adds those two numbers, two percentages together, divides by two. So you're basically equally weighting the number of properties and the total assessment. And then it multiplies that by the total cost of running MPAC province-wide. So when the county receives the bill, however, it puts it into general taxation. When the general taxation budget is divided up, it's only divided up on the basis of total assessment. So the number of properties in a municipality is no longer factored in. So as you can see from the motion here up on the screen, when we're billed that way, the Blue Mountain shares 26.2% of the general tax levy. So that's $484,732. Whereas if we were actually billed on the basis of the formula that was put together when MPAC was founded, it would only be $361,000. And so another way of looking at it, which isn't in the motion, but I can tell you that the MPAC formula, if one was to use bill, distribute the bill among the municipalities in Gray County on the same basis that the MPAC formula was constructed, and it was constructed on the basis of fairness. Because the number of properties obviously has an impact on the cost of assessing. Each property, there's an initial cost of setting up a file. And when you look at a property, obviously, the cost of assessing it gets more complex the bigger it is. So that's where the weighting by assessment comes in. So when you look at if the MPAC formula was used to distribute the bill in Gray County, the cost per property would range from $29.55 per property to $36.77 per property. So a fairly narrow range. But when it's done just only based on assessment in the taxation pool, that range now increases to a low of $22.67 per property in the fortunate community of Chatsworth to $49.36 in the town of Blue Mountain. So we're asked to believe that it actually costs twice as much, more than twice as much, to assess properties in the town of Blue Mountains than it does everywhere else. And whereas the MPAC formula would suggest that that difference is only about 30%, not, you know, 100%. So that's why I brought this motion to ask that the county pass a motion where whereas the municipal act allows for special levies, and whereas MPAC services are being provided or they're undertaken almost entirely directly with the lower-tier municipalities. And then this results in services being provided or undertaken at different levels or in different manner in different parts of the municipality. So why is it that I say that? It's because all of the interaction between MPAC is really at, most of it, 90% of it is at the local municipal level. The local municipal level provides building permit information. It provides settlement agreements. It advises MPAC when there's a change of use of a property. It provides information about when properties move through the development cycle and they should be reassessed. So really, the level to which the service is provided is all determined by the local municipality. The only thing that goes through the county is some information on tax rates. And also, the county sets the tax rate, so there's interaction there. And there's also, the county does get the bill. And then they pass it on after they transform it. So what we're saying is, this is really akin to a special area service. Now, some people might say that, well, you know, MPAC treats all parts of the county the same. I wish that was the case. Because I just have a staff report here from our treasurer as of May 1st where that MPAC has already found about $160 million in missing assessment from previous years in our town, which has resulted in supplemental taxation to the town of Blue Mountains. And this is just for the first five months of the year of $658,104, of which then, and then for the county, we found $625,231. I guess I should have put that in good news and celebrations. Because if you look at it and you assume that, you know, our township, our community is only a small part of Gray County. And if you assume it's 26%, that may be a bit of a fallacy because we're much more active than the rest. But that means we're sometime, somewhere over three times the amount that was projected in the county budget. So if everybody, if MPAC could do the same for everybody else, we would have about 2.5 million of supplemental this year instead of the $738,900 that was projected. So to date, for Chatsworth, $33,000. Georgian Bluffs, $67,000. This is just the portion we found if you divide it by the county levy. So everybody's going to be saving money. Oh, Polly will be happy to know yours is $74,000. So that's $74,000 in taxes that would be based on the percentage of this year that would have come from Gray Highlands, but is now, we found in the supplementary, which will be, you know, hopefully, we can keep going. My treasurer was a bit surprised, she only budgeted $350,000 and we're at $658,000 already. So that's why we're suggesting that county look at, making this a special area levy. And then determining the amount of the levy by using the MPAC formula. Now, I know there's a lot to digest here, so, you know, I'd be happy to refer that for a staff report. That can come back later rather than, you know, if people feel more comfortable. Or if there's any questions, Mr. Warden, be happy.
Councillor Robinson. Thank you, through you, Mr. Warden, and that's precisely where I'm going at. I see the value with respect to your notice of motion. But I certainly feel that there is much more information that we'll require in terms of where we fit individually within lower tier and then collectively as the county. So what I would like to do with all due respect is ask for a staff report, which could assess this thoroughly.
Would you like to move that?
Yes, I would, please.
Okay, so seconded by councillor Carlton. Thank you. Why that's a block, I don't know. So on the motion for a staff report, is there any discussion?
Just in the sense of general discussion, can we have general discussion after the motion?
Well, I think if we're asking for a staff report, if your discussion fits in the context of us requesting a staff report?
Of clarity, and maybe the mayor of Blue Mountains could ask, help me out in a bit of clarity. So from a government standpoint, if there's supplement or if there's from the lower tier or funding, that's paid directly to the smaller tier. I guess where I'm coming from, coming with this question is, if MPAC is billing the upper tier, I'm sure they bill the single-tier municipalities or town. Or why are they not billing the lower-tier municipalities versus the county? Only from the simple fact is, is it just to save money on sending out the bills and they keep it more high-level? Like, it just sort of makes sense that the legislation needs to change to say, okay, we'll just bill every municipality. Then it goes back to the part of fairness, it's just that you, and I agree with the mayor in the sense that most of the dialogue is with the lower tiers with regards to MPAC or supplement. Or I know if there's an appeal and it's changed, there is a trigger that can go back to staff or council to say, yeah, we'll approve that appeal or know we're going to fight that appeal or whatever. So all that dialogue is at the lower tier. So it may, you know, the simple question is, why aren't they billing all municipalities individually?
Just one second, I don't, yeah.
Are we debating whether we want a staff report or are we debating the original motion?
We are debating a staff report, and I was just about to make that point.
And that could be in a staff report.
Perhaps, I was going to say, thank you, that's one of the questions that could be addressed in a staff report. Any other questions or remark with respect to staff report?
Yeah.
Okay.
So our staff have done a lot of work with this already, particularly with Prince, our treasurer, and also our CAO, Sean Everett. They would be happy to help the county staff with the report if the council so wishes.
Okay, so I'll call the question on that motion for a staff report. All those in favor, and any opposed? Okay, one opposed, that's carried. So the main motion then, it will be deferred. Because we'll wait for a staff report to come back and then we'll get back to the main motion at that time, okay? Very good. So we're on to item four now, we have a delegation. Pat, you'll be introducing Mr. Norman.
I'd like to thank Peter Norman for patiently waiting through the, much more about long-term care in Gray County than he ever wanted to know this morning. Peter is the vice president and chief economist for Altus Group, and as most of you are aware, Altus was awarded our tender to complete a Gray County quarry study and potential options. So Peter has, I know some of you have a lot of experience with the quarry and some, it's kind of a new thing. So Peter's got a very thorough PowerPoint here that he's going to go through and go over Altus' report. So thank you, Peter.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
You're welcome.
And thank you very much for inviting me to speak to council this morning. It's always a pleasure to be back in sunny Gray County, and you've dialed up good weather for me today. So I appreciate that as a starting point. My name, as stated, is Peter Norman. I'm here from Altus Group Economic Consulting. We're a firm of urban and real estate economists and other analysts of the property market. And we are located in Toronto and other cities across Canada. And I was retained in late 2017 on this matter of looking at the options, potential options for the Gray County quarry. And so I'm going to spend a couple of minutes this morning just apprising you of what we saw and looked at in that study and what our findings were. And we understand that that may be of assistance in terms of future decisions that you are making. I'm just going to start with a little bit of basic information and some illustrations. The Gray County Quarry is a quarry which is wholly owned by the County of Gray and is located on Gray County Road 40. And it's somewhere in between about Neuford and Chatsworth, I guess it's on, you can see it on the map up there. I've got a couple of kind of stylized pictures of the quarry also in the illustration of you right now. The quarry is not currently in active operation. The quarry does have a number of stockpiles of previously quarried and crushed material that you can see on there and that I'll speak to in a moment. Quarry also has quite a bit of groundwater, surface groundwater in places throughout the quarry, which you can also see in that illustration, which I'll speak to in a minute. There is a small improvement on the property, which is a weigh-scale station, a kind of a trailer-style building of about 10 by 20. Otherwise, it's unimproved with any buildings. And the quarry itself, a little bit of data on it, the quarry property that the county owns is about 100-acre property. And approximately 50 acres of that property is licensed for aggregate extraction, so about half of the property. The county purchased this property in 1995. And the county also operated between 1995 and 2001, operated quarry operations on that property under what's referred to as wayside permits, which is a permit that comes from the ministry that allows municipalities and other public bodies to extract aggregate on a kind of a temporary basis as need be to support infrastructure. And during that period of time, the county extracted about 75,000 tonnes per year of crushed stone out of that quarry. In 2002, Gray County then elected and moved to apply for and to obtain a quarry license for that quarry so that it's more of a permanent operation or at least a long-term operation rather than under the permits. And that license comes, of course, with obligations for remediation and other issues like that. And following obtaining that license, the county operated that quarry for another 11 years. Now, production over that period was a little bit lower. It was about 62,000 tonnes of crushed stone per year. And I'll say that under, prior to the licensing, or prior to actually 2001, I guess, with the amalgamation, that the primary use of all the aggregate was split between county road repair operations and also county road, or sorry, road operations that were being undertaken by the former township of Euphrasia. And then since that time, the stone has been, again, primarily used for county operations. Right now, I spoke about the stockpiles on the property. And right now, the stockpiles amount to about 30,000 tonnes of stone, which you can see is about, back when it was in operation, is roughly equivalent to about half a year of operation, but that's the stone. And some of that has been extracted slowly by the county for, on an as-need basis over the period of time since 2012, when the quarry ceased in terms of operations. Since 2012, the quarry has not had any crushing or blasting, but just the storage of material and some extraction of the material from those stored piles. We were provided a mandate to take a look at this quarry and to advise on some options. The kind of suggested options or the types of options that we were advised to look at was simply a status quo option, either sort of in operation, but really the status quo is really holding it as a, holding the license but without operation. To outsource the operations, but to maintain the license and to hire operations as need be. To expand the overall operation, we looked at some different options for that. To lease the quarry to an operator in order to obtain either rental or other payments from the operator in order to have a long-term source of income and maintain ownership. Or of course, finally, to sell the property to a operator. And I'll just say that the study was undertaken by us at Altus Group. And we had partners on the study contributing components of the study. One was Goldar Associates, which is an engineering firm who provided information on the quantities of material that remain, sorry, not just the stockpiled material, but the material, the extractable product that remains within the quarry. And also Questa Planning, which helped us with some of the planning issues and permissions. Okay, so some of the key sort of, you know, data findings, a starting point for making these assessments was that total production to date from this quarry has been about 1.2 million tonnes of crushed stone. Remaining aggregate resources in the licensed quarry area can be characterized in two primary and importantly different strata. The first being those crushed resources which are above the water table. And those are the resources for which the county currently has a license to extract. And those resources are estimated to be about 1.7 million tonnes. So this is still below ground, this is still extractable material. So in that regard, we are a little less than halfway through the available extractable resource that is available under the current license for that quarry. There is also material which is below the water table. And Goldar estimates that that material may be anywhere between 3.2 million tonnes to 6.4 million tonnes. So you narrow that number down by doing some additional testing, obviously drilling and those sorts of things. And that testing was not part of this study. And there are some issues in terms of being able to even do those tests at this point in time. But nonetheless, as you can see, there's a range of possibility for what might be below the water table. The county's current license for the quarry required, requires a permit to take water from the quarry. So you saw, for instance, there's a lot of water that ends up in quarries, that's a common thing. And so along with your license to extract aggregate, you have to also have a ministry environment permit to take water as well. The county had such a permit from 1999 to, which is just prior to getting the license, to 2008 when that permit expired. And it appears that the county has not had a permit to extract water since that time. So it's in a situation now where it can't easily extract the water that's on there in order even to do the testing nonetheless to continue operations. So that permit would have to be re-acquired. It appears at this point that the county operated the quarry without that permit for a short period of time between 2008 and 2012. Now, we were looking at expansion potential. To the north of the property, which is, sorry, to the north of the extraction area, which is on the property, there's no potential to expand the extraction area just because of environmentally sensitive protected lands that are to the north of the area. East and west is feasible based on acquisition of additional lands. And then finally, going down, the below-water table is also a potential because of the amount of extractable resource underneath there. But it requires a new license and it requires a lot of process to go through getting that license. And our estimates are that that process of getting that license, or at least applying for that license, whether it is, would cost the county approximately $600,000. So that would be to get permits and to go through the testing and so on and so forth that needs to be done. So it's an expensive process to even apply to get to that lower level of aggregate. A little bit of context, because I've been mentioning numbers about tonnes and stuff like that as we go through. So Ontario-wide production of aggregate is about 160 million tonnes a year. We are in an area called Midhurst District in terms of the way that the ministry looks at it. This starts around Midland and comes over and includes parts of Simcoe County and most of Gray County and Moose Mountain. And for that district, there's about 5 to 10 million tonnes a year of just the crushed stone product, product which is similar to what comes out of this. So that's the sort of market in this district that this quarry, you know, could operate within. There are about 480 licenses across the whole Midhurst District, but only 62 quarry licenses, maybe an additional five which are quarry-pit combination licenses. So still under 70 licensed quarries in this district. And that number has been rising. So there are more quarries now and almost twice as many quarries as there were 15 years ago in the Midhurst District. In Gray County alone, aggregate production has been trending upward slightly. And in 2017, we reported that there was about 4.5 million tonnes of aggregate produced by primarily private sector quarries across the county. And in the last five years, in Gray County, there have been 11 new Class A licenses for, most of those are for pits, which don't involve the blasting. Most of them are for pits and one for a quarry license that had been issued in Gray County. So that gives a kind of a context for the size of the market. So in terms of holding the property inactive, of course, to make it active, you'd have to get the water, the permit to take water. And there may be possible reparations for the years that the quarry operated without having that permit as well as you go through that permit process. It's difficult to measure the sort of cost of that, but that would be a kind of a hurdle in terms of sort of the status quo in operations. The quarry could be maintained inactive, as it has been for the last number of years, with just maintaining your licensing fee of about $700 a year. Stockpiles continue to be used or sold. Sales are capped under the minimal license fee at about 3,500 tonnes per year. So I said that there were about, I mean, that's about 10 years applied. So I said there were about 30,000 tonnes on site. So small amounts of aggregate could be taken off and sold, but not a tremendous amount. So there's little revenue in this option. But it does, of course, provide flexibility to simply revisit this whole decision at a future date. But you can kind of get a sense of what the revenue and cost options would be under a status quo. We have not, we've called this the third most favorite option, I guess, out of the, in the end, six that we optioned. So it's about in the middle, I suppose, because it's not terribly costly and it does provide options down the road. The second option we're looking at, which I guess is the least favorable, is to surrender the license, which is certainly possible to do. And surrendering the license then would trigger the rehabilitation obligations of the county under the original license. So for this option, of course, Gray County would incur quite a number of costs. They'd have to make amendments to the Ministry of Natural Resources' approved rehabilitation plan because only about half of the aggregate was taken out from the original plan. So the original plan would have to be modified and then approved and the remediation plan, and then that would have to be put forward. There would have to be amendments to other plans for the rehabilitation, for rehabilitated use and so on and so forth. An application for development permit to the Niagara Escarpment Commission in order to undertake that work. Amendments to the rehabilitation plan would also be needed to account for, well, because of the partial depletion of resources that I mentioned. And then, of course, there would be the cost of the remediation itself that would have to be undertaken, which are, you know, which are also not inconsequential. So the costs are fairly high upfront for this, and there's not a lot of advantages to this other than perhaps envisioned use for the property afterwards. There could be a park or a recreation facility or something like that that would have to be kind of, you know, thought about and considered in a separate context. And then a third option that we looked at was to resuming the quarry operations by outsourcing some or all of the activities to private operators, but maintaining the license and the license obligations within the county. So for, recall that the main use of the quarry was for own-use operations of the aggregate. And so for own-use operations, this option would likely put the cost of the product for the county, for the road work, higher than what the county is already paying for private sector and other counties. So it would likely result in sort of higher cost aggregate for own use. So it would likely result in sort of higher cost aggregate for own use. And as far as becoming a commercial operation might be, if it's owned by the quarry and outsourced and then just kind of a commercial operation selling product into the market. One of the few things that we sort of looked at was that this can be an operation that creates a little bit of friction with the private sector to be kind of operating on a level playing field in that context. Current capacity is about 75,000 tons per year, but with increased investment to increase the capacity, it could probably go up to about 150 tons per year. And that's probably what would be required to make it a viable commercial operation. So outsourcing fees may exceed the value of purchasing aggregate in the market, that's really what the cons are. But with a proper scale, the quarry could support in-sourced operations or market revenue for the option. We have not recommended this option.
Mr. Norman, would you prefer to have questions at the end or as you're making the presentation?
Your worship, I could have taken it either way, but we're now, we only have two little options to go, so it may make more sense to simply have them at the end of the four, if that's okay.
That's just fine.
And then finally, the latter, the, sorry, I said two options, three options, but they're quick. So the fourth option is for Gray County to be resuming quarry operations and expanding the quarry to permit below-water extraction. So the main issues here are the very high costs of undertaking the studies and the requirement to do it. It's not certain even once you do those studies that that permit would be allowed and would be issued. It depends on what the findings for those studies are among other things and their environmental issues in Niagara Escarpment and so on and so forth. You'd have to apply for a fairly substantial increase to the maximum annual extraction, probably we estimate to about 400 to 500 tons per year in order to support that upfront investment, in order to make that a viable operation. So that would come, of course, with a lot more haulage, traffic and so on and so forth that comes with a much larger operation like that. The fifth option is the option, five and six are both very viable options. We've called this the most favorable option and I'll explain why in a moment. Option six also is a very favorable option. So the, option five is the option to lease the quarry to a private operator and provide the private operator the potential to apply for and get the license to go below the water table. So you're passing on the risks of the application process if you're able to find an operator to take that on. So this option avoids a lot of major financial risks of taking on these applications. The existing license could be transferred to the tenant without red tape of winding down the license, remediation and so on and so forth that I spoke of. Royalty estimate, royalties, so there's two ways that you could get revenue out of a system like that. One is simply just to rent the land. The other is what's called royalty, so that would be just a payment for every ton that is extracted by the private operator. In the end, it may be a kind of a mix of it, but in the end, it's really the royalties that set the bar for what operator may potentially pay. Rent would be something, would be a formula you might bring in in order to, you know, in a deal, in order to guard against a year with very little operation so that there's still some revenue coming in. But nonetheless, royalties for extraction, for instance, on Crown Land, which is sort of the base of the thing up to, the quarry is very close to the GTA at the other end of the spectrum, range from about 50 cents per ton up to about $2 per ton extracted. So we figure that probably $1 a ton is the feasible amount that we, but we also tested in the report, you'll see values that were at $1 a ton or $1.50 a ton. I will say as a sort of an aside here that we also did look at the production and costs of the existing quarry historically by the county based on market pricing, but with the actual costs undertaken. And the revenue, the net revenue per ton is about $2 per ton out of this quarry on average over time. So royalty would be about half, basically sharing about half the revenue if you can sort of see it from that perspective. It's recommended that the county lease by tender and therefore you're not, as opposed to, you know, setting a value to begin with, so therefore you're, you know, asking operators to provide what they think would be the value and compete against each other in order to get there. The county would, in this, you know, in this option, the county would have to do drilling and more accurate resource quantity estimates before entering into a binding lease, a royalty agreement, and would have to sort out the water issue in order to do this. So the cons, so the cons for this option, there's a default risk for a tenant, he could go through this whole process and then an operator abandons the quarry after five years or something, that's certainly something, I mean, that can be dealt with in terms of the way the contract is put together, but nonetheless, that continues to be a risk. But the advantage of this kind of operation is that you maintain control of the property and of the quarry, of aspects of extraction quantities and other things that the county may wish to set in the agreement. And there is at least a strong potential for a nice steady stream of income coming in from that operation. And that's in the long term, I mean, depending on what the, depending on whether the operator is able to and does successfully start extracting below the water table, there could be years and years of income potential. And then finally, selling the quarry is a very strong option as well. So this elimination of all the risks associated with the uncertainty over the future of this quarry. There's not a lot of market comparables for this, so it's difficult to discuss the price per se, but we benchmark the price off of the kind of royalty basis because it's, those are sort of tantamount from a financial perspective. So it's probably, you know, it's probably something that would be, if it's about 1.7 tons still to be extracted, it's 1.7 million tons, it's probably about $1.7 million in value potentially, but in that kind of range based on the royalty uncertainty and also the extraction uncertainty with the low-water table piece. Tender process, of course, would deal with all that because you would have the private sector doing their own math in order to come to the table. Sale of the property, well, anyway, that's where I give that range right there. And then, so there's not a lot of disadvantages to this option other than the fact that you relinquish control of a resource, of an important resource. It eliminates ownership risks and allows for the recapture of embedded investment that you already have in this quarry. And so, your worship, that brings me to the end of my prepared remarks, so I am prepared to answer some questions if need be and if that will help.
Thank you very much, Mr. Norman. We do have some questions. Counselor Swaber.
Thank you. This is what I enjoy, mining agreements. Anyway, so on the number two, surrender licenses, there's a current closure plan and is there security for that? You mentioned that the closure plan would have to be amended and so is there currently some security lodged for the closure? And if the plan is amended, do you see that increasing substantially?
I don't know, sir, I don't know the answer to the question about whether there is security already from a financial perspective at the county. We estimate that there would be additional costs to, just going through the amendment process of the plan, but those costs might be offset by slightly reduced costs of the actual remediation because the quarry's not as low as it would have been otherwise under full extraction.
Okay. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Peter Norman. Thank you very much for your presentation. And I'm just looking for some, with respect to quarry option number five, that is the leasing option where Gray County would retain ownership of this asset, lease it out, but with respect to the license, surrender the license to the tenant. At what point would it make sense to recover the license? For example, should the company no longer exist or is there a benefit overall for the lease agreement to have a statement in there that said that the license would be reverted back under so many conditions? I'm just not seeing, I see the value unless you tell me otherwise, retaining an asset potentially as well as the license. So further comment?
Yeah, so the value, so transferring, the value that's entailed in transferring the asset itself would have to be detailed in the lease agreement and would have to be part of the agreement that you've come to with the potential operator and that would be detailed in the tender to begin with. So, because surrendering the license also would, you know, would transfer the remediation obligations to that person, so that also is a consideration in terms of what they bring. And if, so that, you know, so from the ministry's perspective, those obligations still have to sit somewhere. So either the private company has to, you know, agree to it or the county. If the license, if the private company ceases operation or in other ways can't maintain that license, I would suspect your lease agreement would have that license and that obligation transferred back to the county and that there may be some reparations for that embedded in the contract.
Counselor Martiniki.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Still on that slide, just above the con and pro, county would have to do the drilling and more accurate resource quality estimates. Could that not be part of a tender to be included in the responsibilities of a leasing?
So the issue around that would be that there's so much uncertainty with the wide range of potential extractable rock. So it's difficult to put an agreement together when you don't know what that range is that's underneath there. You could embed that in and you could embed the ultimate value of that lease based on the results of that drilling, but that's a more complicated thing. It would probably give bidders on this a more, a larger comfort level that the county had already come to, like more substantial engineering estimates based on drilling so that they would know what extractable resource they possibly have underneath that lake.
Counselor Swaber.
On the same topic, are those, what level are those resource estimates? Are they measured, indicated or inferred at this point in time?
The work, perhaps it would be better if Golda was here to speak to that work in particular, but that work was done, Golda did some work independently on the quarry prior to this study being undertaken in order to advise on those estimates. And they're, I think that they're inferred from, you know, what's happened on other properties and so on and so forth. But I don't know technically how it falls into the three categories you gave, but they're not confirmed from drilling on the property.
Counselor McQueen.
Mr. Warden, I have a few questions to the presenter. And thank you very much for your presentation. I guess the one thing is, if option five was to lease it out for the tendering or RFQ process, could we have it in there that you're leasing it per tonne or just for the land? Could it be an option like, so we're going to rent it from you for $100,000 a year? Or whatever, I don't know what that could be. Is that an option? So then you just know exactly you're going to get to continue revenue and as I'm just saying, in the sense of that company making that available or making that part of their tender process?
Yeah, I think so. I think more traditionally, there's a kind of a revenue share on the thing, but it could also just be a blend of those as well. It could be a minimum amount of rent plus.
So we leave a bit of leeway that those people that we're submitting could have some leeway? Okay, that's good.
I think the advantage, you know, basically the advantage of doing it on an extraction basis is that, I mean, the potential to expand this quarry. Presuming that the underwater permit gets granted, given that the potential to expand the annual tonnage from there, that, you know, I mean, all that, you may, the county may find that they have left a lot of money on the table by just going with a fixed rent.
Sometimes from a financial point of view is they know they got, next 10 years they're going to get X number of revenue, sometimes it makes it simple that way too. I'm not saying that's the right way, I'm just saying on an option side. The other point was made is you talked about the expansion of aggregate and specifically quarries in Gray County. How much of that is leaving Gray County? Because we know in certain areas of that, you know, you talk about the expansion of quarries, but I know in certain areas, a lot of it's leaving Gray County, it's not being used in Gray County. I just sort of throw it out there in the sense that you're trying to do an analysis. And I guess, how many of those licenses, how many licenses have been expired or have been reverted back? And you talked about the expansion and that, but I just throw that out there in the sense to try and match apples to apples.
Yeah, no, those are good questions. I mean, yes, there's some, some aggregate is leaving, but aggregate tends to be very, tends to be pretty localized in terms of where the markets are. So the amount that leaves Gray County, some of it's going to be leave, but within the Midland District, you know, it's, the districts are kind of set up to be relatively self-contained in the sense that you don't, but you always have, the GTA continues to be a draw, obviously, for aggregate. Now, I don't have right here today the answer to the question of what proportion leaves the county and also what proportion comes in because there is some inflow of aggregate as well. But it would be a minority probably of the overall production.
What would be happening, they may have a different answer for you because they know, they see a lot going down 124. The point, just in the sense of trying to get clarity on a few things, I guess the other thing in the sense of value, I know you talked about nine, or what slide was, maybe it was number six, where 910,000 to 1.45, but certainly if you're talking about any of your thing, about if we were to lease it out at, say, an average of a dollar and just stayed that, it's minimum cost for us, but the end of the day, when it was totally extracted, we would still have an asset to sell. Right? So I guess that's why your range from 910 to 1.45 varies, I guess.
Sorry, the range in there, I mean, it's trying to keep these slides relatively simple, the report is 150 pages, but the range is based on a kind of a matrix of assumptions. So the assumption on the base value of the crushed stone, which is sort of tantamount to the royalty amount, range, we figure ranges between a dollar and a dollar fifty.
Right.
We've got 1.7 that we know in terms of the extractable value and there are a number of costs between getting here to there, including, you know, the drilling and stuff, so that brings it down. So you could read that as being a million to a million to 1.7 million, but reduced by the net costs of the sale process.
Sir, it depends how you slice it, right? So I guess, two points left, is what's the retail cost of aggregate? So I know you have numbers of 1.7, 3.2 to 6.4. Is the retail of a tonne of gravel on average $8 a tonne, $10 a tonne?
Yeah, it's not far from that. This quarry produces what's called granular M for the most part, which is a sort of medium grade road product. And right now, well, I mean, the data that we're working with, which is about a year old, it's, that's selling for 8.75 to 9.85, so in that range. So you're right, about eight bucks, I guess, eight, nine bucks is a good way to characterize that.
So if you looked at the 1.7 that's left, if you save the easy math at $10, $10 at 1.7, would that be 11 point?
So about 17 million, I guess.
Yes, okay, 17 million and then you go to 32 million to 64 million if that was your total extraction below water table. So that's just an interesting number to know what that retail value is worth in the sense of going out the gate. I guess last comment, Mr. Warden, in the sense that I would certainly like, and I don't know if any others around the table would like this, an opportunity to have an onsite visit. I know that certainly buying and selling property sort of sometimes leads to be onsite and get that explanation maybe from Patrick and just say, this is what's happening and it just gives you that more attention. So I just throw that out to you, Mr. Warden. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson, excited by those scintillating vacation pictures of piles of rock. I will just address the counsel, one of the counselor's comments just back, just back to the value of the, you were asking about the economics of the value of selling. Remember that the extraction costs are about $6. So when you're.
No, no, that's good. The net value, there is still a lot of extraction cost.
Think that the net value per tonne is around $2. That's been the county's experience. So I'll just throw that out, too, Mr. Warden. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson excited by those scintillating vacation pictures of piles of rock. I will just address the counsel, one of the councilors' comments, just back to the value of the, you were asking about the economics of the value of selling. Remember that the extraction costs are about $6. So, when you're...
No, no, that's good. The net value, there is still a lot of extraction cost.
So we think that the net value per tonne is around $2. That's been the county's experience.
Sometimes you hear the same, well, the retail value of that is X, Y.
Of course, of course.
Counselor Soever.
Staying on slide six here, and let's follow up to Counselor McQueen's question. So you've done a net present value calculation. What kind of discounts rates were you using on that?
We put a, we have a range, in the table, in the report, you can see, we have a table where we put a range of rates, so we're testing between, I think we're testing in there between about seven and a half and 10% discount rates, and what the implications are.
Yes, and was there any value placed on the residual value of the property as an estate lot after the mining happened?
That wasn't assessed. And in my remarks, I was sort of saying that there can be various values for the remediated property, whether it's sale for residential purposes, or parkland, or whatever else for the county's purposes, as an environmental feature right north of it, and so on and so forth. A lot of these remediated quarries end up becoming recreational facilities, if you have your public ownership.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I don't see any further questions, so I will thank you, Mr. Norman, for your presentation. Counsel, I'm gonna propose that we quickly deal with the consent agenda, and then the first item for discussion would be this item. Is that reasonable? Am I seeing nodding heads, a few? Hopefully, they're not nodding because you're... All right, so can we deal with the consent agenda? Is anybody wanting to pull anything from the consent agenda? Counselor Soever?
Item E, the correspondence from, down, down the community safety and well-being plan.
Very good. Counselor Robinson?
Yes, Warden, item A is also the item that I would like pulled, so thank you very much.
A?
No, E and A.
E, sorry.
A and E, yes.
Did you say A or E?
E.
E, okay. So E and E. Okay, other than that, so if I could get a motion then to approve the consent agenda as presented, or amended, moved by Counsel Burley, seconded by Counsel Patterson. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie, thank you. Okay, and so now, we can move to item 7A. Pat, you're up. If we could get this item on the table. Moved by Counsel Mackey, seconded by Counsel Millen. Pat?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. There sure isn't much technically that I'm gonna add to Peter's presentation here, but I just was gonna give you some background on where kind of staff is coming from, and where the recommendation for looking for direction sort of came from. So, started at the county in 2008, and I've seen a lot of different recommendations for the quarry, right from buy another property and expand, to sell it. So just to give you some background on maybe why staff has leaned towards selling, you know, so much frequently in the past, but I think it's just worth understanding that the public sector employee typically is pretty risk averse. The, you know, we all want what's best for the taxpayer. The consequence of making the wrong decision with a public asset is pretty dire for us as employees. So we worry about risk a lot. You know, we don't wanna be the guy who put out the 407 lease, you know what I mean? Like you're...
Ooh.
And I don't, you know, I think that every time I drive over it, not just because I'm paying 40 bucks, but just in general, the amount of money lost is pretty scary. But, and the other thing that we think of as staff is just the amount of work it's going to be, in an area that we are definitely not experts. So, we know it's gonna be a lot of money, and a lot of time, and a lot of unknowns. So just even looking at the permit take water that expired in 2008, and the people that were running the quarry for the county then were the people that started the quarry, not people that just inherited it. So it even ran out when people that theoretically knew what they were doing were running it. So, those kind of regulations that you're not used to, you know, with the exception of Counselor Soever here, there aren't many that have ever been in this sort of industry. So, and definitely no one that works for us is kind of involved with, other than some operations in the quarry at the staff level. So, that just kind of gives you some background on where we're at. And as far as, you know, Altus, they do have a different lens than us. You know, they're a billion-dollar company, clearly they're not as risk averse as we are, or they wouldn't have gotten that big with acquisitions and the type of work that they do. So, they didn't really, you know, it's not really their job in this study to figure out who's gonna be in charge of this thing on the county's behalf. Who, how much manpower is it gonna take the county to run it? How much time is it gonna take? How's it gonna go? Is the deal gonna work out? You know, that wasn't really within their scope. They're looking at it as an investment, which is what they do. They're economists, and that's kind of what, where Peter was coming from. So just to go back quickly to my report, a lot of it does outline some of those risks. And that is why it seems so risk-centric here, because we think about it a lot. So, onto page 21, there's a little bit in there about aggregate reform. The provincial government is looking at the aggregate industry, they had a lot of suppliers come in to talk about the industry and possibly cutting red tape. We weren't at that meeting, we tried to get invited, and we were told that we... So, maybe we don't produce enough, I don't know. But anyway, like, nothing, we've been producing, but... So, there's always that risk. You don't know where the, where the documentation is going, where the process is going. Are they gonna make aggregate easier to get? Is it gonna be easier to go below the water table, harder? You never know. So that's kind of all the risk that's out there. Then the report goes on to talk about just the, you know, the oversight and administration cost, and just the fact that, what scares us most, I think, about a lease is the fact that you're not there. So you don't know exactly what's going on. Obviously, you're gonna swing by, you know, like a landlord would if he had a rental apartment or something, but you're not there every day seeing exactly what's going on. They could be telling you one thing and doing another. Now, hopefully that wouldn't happen, you'd have a good tenant with a good lease, and, you know, the ministry would be around checking on things, doing an audit or whatever, but that is a risk that's out there for us as staff. So, and it lists some, you know, monitoring programs that are required, which as you can see, there's a lot of monitoring that goes on. It's quite a, operating a quarry is quite a process, as we've discovered. So, other things that are just out there to think about are the use of material, you know, historically, we've crushed this material and used it for roads. There probably is a higher-end value of that material that we don't know about, you know, maybe it's worth the most value cutting it into six by six blocks, like, we don't know. So, you know, the quarry operator could discover that, and all of a sudden, you're kind of paying based on a crushed gravel, you know, that's eight or nine dollars, as we said, but maybe a rock in that shape is worth 15 dollars, you know, 15 dollars a tonne, I don't know. So then I kind of go in on page 22 about evaluating proposals, and like Peter got into, you have your rent, and you have your royalties, right? So, you know, if you just charge them rent, and that was all you charged them, and they emptied the quarry in a year, and they're gone, obviously you didn't get your value. So, there's other, you know, things that have happened in the past where they're just renting it, and they don't want anybody to have that material. So, you know, you have to make sure you're gonna get your money, and the quarry is gonna be operating. So, on to page 23, there's the whole below-the-water-table thing. You know, it's a big number of, a big amount of material, big range of material below the water table, and, you know, as Peter said, you need production to make that viable. So, and then on to rehab at the end. So, that's just kind of a summary of the report, and why we're looking for direction, because we are pretty risk averse, and it's hard for us to recommend to go down a lease, because we know there's a lot of landmines that we'll have to kind of navigate around on the way down there. So, that's why kind of staff leans towards selling, you know, mitigate risk and liability, and its immediate income. As Altus showed, you know, there's a big upside to leasing, too. You still own the, you know, that, you can look at that both ways. Still owning it can be bad, or still owning it can be very good, because you're still, you've still got that three to six million tons below the water table that probably is not touched at that point, once the 1.7 million is done. So that is where I could see the upside of leasing. So, there is no easy answer, there's no right answer, same as if you were buying a rental property. Some people can live with the risk, and get into that game, and some don't. So, that's kind of where we're at, and we're really looking for the council's help, whether it's today or not, or whenever, but really some direction going forward would be appreciated.
Okay. Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden. And Pat, thanks for all your work. I mean, certainly, last round of council, we did hear about this. I appreciate your honesty, that, you know, we have a lot of expertise here at the county, but aggregate business is not one of them. And for that reason, I think we certainly should be selling it, Mr. Warden. Thank you.
Counselor Soever.
Thank you. Yeah, I think there are, there is some merit to Mr. Hoist's comments on the selling, but I would favor lease. It's just a matter of how you write the lease, having done mining agreements for about 40 years now. It's, a lot of these risks can be mitigated through the lease process, and it could be we put together an RFP, and, you know, we'd obviously want a fairly substantial security deposit, so if something happened, we would have the money, we wouldn't be left in a bond. I would look at the royalty, as a bid on the royalty, but also a minimum, say, annual royalty, so that, you know, or every six months, and you just make this, so if somebody wants to just tie up these resources, we still get paid. And obviously, you wanna make sure that you're not saddled with any of the compliance issues, and that would be the security deposit from the owner. If they went out of compliance, you would trigger the termination clause and seize the security. So, there are ways to mitigate the risk of leasing, and, you know, although it's quite out there, it's not really prime estate lots right now. I know, we, I just went through an exercise for another pit that we're trying to deal with a problem on, and when you look at the residual value of the lot as an estate lot, like, if this eventually gets mined out, there's only 50 of 100 acres is mineable, so what you'd have is a 50-acre property with a 50-acre lake. So, that could be as a county facility, as a recreational area, or if somebody wanted to pay us 10 million for their own lake at some point in the future, that might be a good idea as well. I don't know. That really, that's a whole other real estate valuation outside the mining.
Scott, you might wanna chime in, because there may be planning issues that come to play there, right?
Sure, in this case, in this case, the lands are identified in the Niger's Garment Plan area, so our own planning has very little to say about this, and as I think was in Mr. Norman's presentation, the lands immediately to the north of the 50 acres that are being licensed right now are under a fairly restrictive designation in the Niger's Garment Plan, so there might be limited redevelopment opportunities. But if that was something council wished to explore further, we could certainly talk to staff at the Niger's Garment Commission on that.
Okay. Counselor McQueen?
Seeing that, you know, maybe the mayor of Blue Mountains has some expertise, maybe he could help share some to the staff. Saying that, I guess, Mr. Warden, I guess, I hear the part about selling the quarry, and could we have it so it goes out that we obtain some lease options, and if we don't feel that it's the right, or nobody really comes to where we wanna go, we also then still have the option of selling it? But we, if we don't entertain that idea, we won't know. So you don't really test, until you test the market, you won't know if there's even a market out there that people wanna lease it. And I think, I think that the sense that having royalties is something, is a revenue stream, and I think, Pat, I think you have alluded that that value underneath that water table is probably some value, in the sense that having an existing license is a lot easier, I would think, than trying to start from scratch. So there's probably value of obtaining that one below. It's a process, I think it was $600,000 that was suggested, but 3.2 to 6. whatever it was, million tones is probably something a lot easier to obtain than it would be if you're starting from scratch, because it's already established, you've got your buffers, you've got all that, you've got the scales, you've got all that stuff in place. But I just wonder if the option is, is going out and see what kind of feeling we do get on the lease, and if it's not to the satisfaction of the way we wanna go, then we have the option, as Mr. Mackey says, we can sell it, right?
Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. There's always been a notion of mind that government shouldn't be doing something that the private sector can do better. And from what I read in the report, and indeed, Mr. Norman's presentation, the county cannot mine this material and sell it or use it into the market at a cost that the private sector can. So it's no different than producing widgets, or selling cattle, or anything else. If you're not gonna make any money out of it, get out of the business, or you're gonna get put out of business. And in my mind, the taxpayer shouldn't bear the cost of providing material to the market at an escalated price that the private sector can do better. So I am a proponent for selling this property, get out of the business. There's no shortage of private operators that'll sell us the material at a lower cost than what we can produce it, so let's get out of the business and reduce the risk to ourselves, and give the taxpayers better bang for the buck for something that we're better at.
Thank you. So in terms of seeking direction, you're getting all kinds of direction. I would probably think that what we want to do is, if people want to actually put a motion, if somebody wants to put a motion for sale, or if somebody wants to put a motion for lease, we can do that, have a debate, and then make a decision, and then you'll have your direction, sir. So that said, Counselor Soever.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the county pursue option five, which is the lease, a lease to the point of putting out a request for a proposal, and I'd be happy to help with that, in terms of looking at the terms, to see that we're, we've got a proposal, and if we...
I'm sorry, I'm just gonna see if I can get a second, or if you didn't, I'll allow you to add some additional comments. A second, Counsel McQueen.
Yes, and then, provided, if nothing satisfactory is, if nothing very attractive is achieved, then obviously, then we revert to option six, because we should at least investigate whether we can do better by leasing and mitigating the risk. If we make the proposal quite onerous, if somebody jumps at it, then why not? If it creates more value than the sale.
Can I ask, then, in that proposal, that if you wish us to pursue moving forward with a leasing option for evaluation, that staff are provided with the ability to seek the appropriate resources to develop? I appreciate your help, but I don't think that any of us are in a position to really even begin that work, so we would wanna get the right resources to put together the leasing document and do the prep for us. Yes, Pat?
Good. Okay. Comments on the motion? Pat?
Actually, one thing, I just wanted to make sure, I see purchasing is here, I just wanted to make sure, I know we're pretty hesitant on putting out a tender, that we don't intend on awarding. I just wanted to make sure the purchasing manager, is there a problem with the process of that? Sorry, I'm in a spot there. A lot of people that probably know me here, I'm the team, I might call the purchasing manager. We can certainly put out an RFP that sets minimums, and gives us the ability not to award shit enough in that, if that's what you're referring. Short answer is, if we put an RFP out, there's nothing that says we have to award it.
Good. Okay. Counsel Burley.
Request a recorded vote.
Okay. Counsel McQueen?
So, just going through the numbers, I think, yeah, you know, say, bottom line is, the property's worth a million bucks, sort of from the nine, or, what was it, 9.42 to 1.42, or whatever that number was. But there could be a potential of what's even above water, that there could, we could get maybe three times the value back to the taxpayers. So, the only reason I'm supporting the idea of the lease option is to look at, see what, if there's even interest out there, because from the taxpayer's perspective, if we can triple the money, I think we need, as county counselors, to look at that option first, just for the simple fact is, is it even possible? And I think we get criticized many times, as, why didn't you look at it? Well, I think if we, we know that the default is, we can sell the property, we can get out of the business, but if we don't look at the option of at least obtaining some input on trying to increase the value, I think that we could get criticized that way, too. So, I will support option five.
Okay. Any other comments, and we'll move to a vote. Counsel Burley has called a recorded vote.
Counsel Mackey?
Yes.
Counsel Gamble?
Yes.
Okay, Counsel Burley?
No.
Counsel Carlton?
No.
Counsel McQueen?
Yes.
Counsel Little?
Yes.
Counsel Patterson?
No.
Warden Hicks?
No.
Counsel Kentner?
Yes.
Counsel Kivany?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
Counsel O'Leary?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Woodbury?
No.
Counsel Millen?
No.
Counsel Soever?
Yes.
Counsel Bartnicki?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Hutchinson?
Yes.
Motion is carried 6726.
Okay. Thank you. Now we have the direction.
Time frame, I guess, time frame, is any idea, six months, two months, any idea? Do you need a time frame, Mr. Ward, in that motion?
I think staff has got the direction and will leave it in their hands to bring it back.
Well, not another eight years.
The amendment that we've done a recorded vote on.
And the amendment?
All right, so we amended the above motion for staff to pursue the quarry.
Well, did we amend or did we give direction through that motion?
We did, but it still has to be through an amendment. It's not through the main motion because the main motion was put on the floor. So we just need to vote on the main motion with the amendment there.
All right, I'm hearing that we need to vote on the main motion. We've given that direction, so now let's vote on the main motion. I'll call the question, all those in favor of the motion, the main motion, which is that council provide direction to staff on the next steps. I think we've already done that. So all those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. I'm going to suggest that we take a very short break. I know it's not for lunch, but just a short break. One chance to stretch. Item 7B, our corporate financial update and year-end projection. Somebody make a motion to get the item on the table? By Counsel Bartnicki, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Hutchinson, excuse me. Jesus, brain of mine, I don't know what's going on. Those girls are still screaming in my ear. Okay, Kevin?
Thank you. Yeah, this report here, FRCW 18-19 is our first corporate financial update that we've brought to council for the 2019 year. We've always historically done these in quarterly updates. So the next one we'd be bringing back would be later in the year, probably October, and bringing back either August, September update. So and hopefully have more information at that time as well because we're still struggling with a number of ministry funding announcements that we haven't received yet. So what this is, is the financial leads have worked with department heads and managers and looked at what they've spent to date, what tendings they've had and what they're seeing occurring and projecting forward, what they feel their year-end position will be based on where we're at at the end of April. And so at the end of April, we were projecting a year-end surplus of about $944,000. Note, this surplus includes the estimated use of 725,000 in a one-time modernization funding that we received in about the end of March. That was given to small and rural municipalities to look at finding efficiencies and modernizing services to try to contain expenditure costs. So it felt more like to me like severance pay, but just with all the cuts from seeing, but anyway. But we'll have to, we'll work away and use that. I've had, I've made phone calls with the ministry on that because we've heard rumblings about that we have to report back on that funding and it has to be used specifically for, you know, efficiency studies, consultants, et cetera. Again, my conversation with the ministry staff saying, no, it was one-time unconditional could be used as the municipality felt fit. So, because I know some local municipalities have used it for capital, et cetera. So again, they said that would look, it would not look like they were keeping their promise in accordance to the minister's letter that it was unconditional. So, but they said they may seek to ask how we did use it, just verbally to try to promote, you know, some municipalities that maybe used it for interesting ideas or proactive ideas that could be considered by others or something like that. So that's what the communication I've had with ministry staff. As well in this surplus projection, there's about 700,000 in surplus on the capital projects based on the tenders to date that transportation has put in and awarded. And those awards had come through council. I believe you're at, we've awarded five out of seven projects. So I think the report in one says eight, there was to be eight, but one has been canceled due to timing, working with a local municipality. So that, without those two items, what we'd be projecting is about a $481,000 deficit. But with those items there, we're projecting a surplus here at the end. I'm just going to go through some highlights here and try to highlight the surplus and deficit items. Administration, we're looking at a positive variance, about $269,000. We've had some staffing variances, financial analyst in the finance department and then the health and safety manager was seconded to fill the POA position. Manager position and investment income is higher, we're getting higher returns. So that, based on projections, again, we'll have to see what our bonds do and things like that, but this is an early stage. Council currently on budget is anticipated to end the year on budget. Information services, which is our computers, our corporate servers and filters and infrastructure that we're anticipating to end the year on budget. Weekly indemnity and workers' compensation. Weekly indemnity costs are anticipated to end the year with a surplus of about $18,400. And this is based off the number and the length of the weekly indemnity claims remain at the current level. Workers' compensation budget is projecting a year-end deficit of about $145,000. The main impact driver on this is the large number of PTSD and traumatic, traumatic mental stress claims that we have in paramedic services. So the healthcare costs and loss of earnings and administration fees, we've expensed about $126,000 so far in 2019 on that. So if these, if these year-end projections are correct, we can see a deficit being realized. We do have WSIB reserve as, and I should have backed up, we are a Schedule II WSAB client, meaning we self-insure our WSIB claims. And so we have had actuarials done for our financial statements and to give us a sense of what we should have in reserves for WSIB. And it projected roughly around $3 million. And we have just over $3 million in that reserve. So twofold, if we ever, this helps us fund when we have claim years like this that are negative, that we have something to draw on. But as well, if the county ever wished at a point in time to go back to being a Schedule I and work through WSIB and you dealt annually with surcharges and near rebates and stuff based on your claim costs, that could be done. But we would have to use that reserve then and assume those claims are on record until we transition back to being a Schedule I client. But Schedule II has been a cost saver so far for the county to date. So I'm not recommending that we switch that right now, but that's why that reserve is there as well. And it's part of the actuary we do for our financial statements. Assessment, this is the impact assessment, we're projecting the end of the year on budget with that. Provincial offenses, we're projecting a deficit of about $85,000 after cost sharing with Bruce County. Gross revenues are about $91,000 lower than budgeted as of the end of April, with gray share being about $53,000. Ticket volumes and revenue are difficult to predict, especially based on the first four months. This historically has been a lower period of time for tickets. We usually see ticket volumes increase during the summertime, I guess with vacationers and travel, more cars and stuff on the roads. But we are right now, at the end of April, about 500 fewer tickets being issued in the first four months in 2019 as compared to the same period in 2018. And we also have gone back and did an analysis of the last five years and tried to project this out based on what we've seen in a wider range of data than to see how this looks. We are also concerned a bit about the change that has been put out by the provincial government on the reduction in the OPP budget for fieldwork. So we're hoping that doesn't negatively impact us as well in the amount of tickets that are issued. So we'll keep an eye on that. We did have some savings in salary and benefit lines with, like I said, we seconded a staff member into the POA manager's position and that person is lower on the grid. So health unit, we're looking at a projected end-of-year surplus of about $15,000. When the budget was drafted, we based a 2% increase in the funding based on the Ministry of Health providing a 2% increase in 2018 to our health unit. That appears to be a zero based on what we're seeing now. And so the county, I had developed a budget there with additional cost sharing in it. So it's about $15,000 surplus. Property, based on the first four months, we're projecting a year-end surplus of about $15,000. We have some salary and benefit savings and some hydro savings, but the offset of that is our snow removal costs were higher so far in 2019. Taxation grants and other, like I said, I spoke about the one-time modernization funding, 725,000 that we received. We also received a second cannabis funding that, but it specifically has to be used for items in relationship to the cannabis. So I'm not showing it as part of our surplus because it is, actually has to be spent in a certain manner and it can't just fall to general revenue. Tax adjustments, I usually wait till later in the year and I contact each of the local municipalities to see how their subs and write-offs are coming and ask for their projections. So that's not included in this report at this time, but that will be coming. And the next one, I'll ask for an update from the local treasurers on that. Planning anticipates to end the year on budget. Agriculture appears to be on budget and forestry and forestry trails as well are anticipated to be on budget. So economic development, we're projecting a year-end surplus of about $179,000. This was the startup year for the community hub, the Sidnum Campus. And external scenarios have impacted the planned process of securing revenues for that site. So staff is still working to try and introduce programming as soon as the fall of 2019, but that is impacting the revenue projections we had in that budget. Tourism, a year-end surplus of about $15,000. Just a staff vacancy that occurred there that is contributing to that. Gray Roots is anticipating to end the year on budget. Highlight in the report, their kids camp and their education program and their membership and stuff are on target. And even the kids camp is actually all sold out, so that's good news. Ontario Works, when we wrote this report, we projected a year-end surplus of about $19,000. We met yesterday with ministry staff. They have confirmed to us yesterday that our provincial funding will be based on our 2018 actuals. So we will have some work to do here. And we are working on staff there and trying to plan because that is a negative impact to this projection. So any cost of living or things like that, we're being told that those will not be funded, that we are being maintained at our 2018 levels unless we can come up with a business case on some certain aspect that they feel that the ministry would consider. But cost of living was one that they were pretty much emphatic that that wouldn't qualify. So anyway, that will have an impact on us. Childcare, projecting the end of the year with small surplus of about $11,000. Some savings in salary and benefit lines, but we have fee subsidy savings with fewer home childcare providers. Housing, a projected year-end deficit of about $50,000. Tenant-related revenue is on target, but we've had a number of move-outs. Actually, we had significant move-outs in 2018 and we're seeing, we're surpassing that in 2019. So when someone moves out and it causes maintenance repairs to those units and stuff, so our maintenance costs are higher. And as well, the snow removal budget has been fully spent and that matches our property administration building here. So, but they're hoping that they can reduce some other budget lines and, but they're, so they're projecting just a shortfall of about $50,000. Capital budget currently has about an $18,000 surplus, but they have a number of projects yet still to be awarded. But staff is assuming that the capital budget will come in on, and be adequate and come in on budget. Long-term care, this portfolio is anticipated to end the year with a deficit of about $335,000. And primarily this is to do with funding changes. Our case mix index classifications, those have gone down. So that's resulted in about a $113,000 loss on the three homes. And then the funding announcements, while there was some increases, there were some decreases or funding removed, structural compliance was one that was significant to Lee Manor. That was, we were getting a $5 per day DM per bed for that home. So that was a significant amount of funding loss to Lee Manor. So that amounts to about $274,000 a year that we've lost in the structural compliance funding. And so that begins, that effective change is August 1st. So that'll equal about a $114,000 loss for Lee Manor alone. So those are issues we're dealing with in long-term care. Like I said, there's been other announcements of additional funding, but we've been hard hit based on our mix of revenues and the structural compliance that we have with our homes. And we've had years of CMI where I've stood here and said we have additional revenues because we, our CMIs were going up and, which is that case make index, which is a point in time where they see how the acuity of your clients are and that if that's a higher acuity level, that you should be getting more money to support those. So either, so everybody that runs homes are always trying to increase their reporting on that to show their acuity is higher and report, in essence, to be strong with their CMI and hopefully get additional funds or maintain. But as everyone's doing that, the pot isn't any bigger, so the money switches around. So we're at this stage here, just based on our clients, I guess. And where we were, we're actually losing money in 2019. And transportation services, an operating deficit of about $50,000. We had some repairs to some, one of our salt sand domes. And we also had some unanticipated staffing costs. And then again, I said of the, of the seven projects that we've awarded, those have come in approximately about $700,000 under budget. So as long as we don't get into change orders or things that are surprises on those projects and stuff, that's what we're projecting for those. Paramedic services, we're projecting the end of the year with a balanced operating capital budget. That again is based on an unknown of the provincial funding on this program because at first we were told we were only going to get our 2018 funding levels. The government announced that they were reverting from that for paramedic services, the health unit and childcare. But we have not received any confirmation. We had built in a one and a half percent inflationary on the provincial grant for paramedic services and that has been the history. They've always looked at your prior year's actuals and given you an inflationary. So, but, so what they've meant by their, you know, pulling, changing their direction on that budget reduction, we don't know what that looks like and what that inflationary is or if there is even one in it. So, and that'd be about, if we do not get an inflationary increase, it'll be about a $175,000 loss that we haven't incorporated into this. So overall, all the county departments and what we're projecting here is a surplus of about $943,000. Again, I'm saying that's with the use of that one-time modernization money. That's with the 700,000 in the capital surplus in transportation. And without that, without those two items there, we would have been looking at about a $481,000 deficit. So I want to thank all the finance staff and the directors and managers for helping me put this together. I couldn't put this all together without help. But again, the provincial funding announcements, we're still working through and we're still awaiting on those. So this projection could change. And so I said again, we don't bring monthly financials here. We've always done them on a quarterly basis. If council's looking for a change in that, we'll take direction. But it's, we seem to think the quarters were pretty good. It helps us with trends and stuff to see things. So I'll try to answer any questions you have or I'll ask directors or managers to step in and help as well.
Counsel Mackey?
Thank you, Ward. Thanks, Kevin, for your report. Kevin, particular to the case mix, or case mix index for long-term care, the years that we've had higher acuity levels and had additional funds, has that went into a reserve that we're able to- Kevin, particular to the case mix, or case mix index for long-term care, the years that we've had higher acuity levels and had additional funds, has that went into a reserve that we're able to top into on the years that we have a lower case mix index?
That's what we've done, if we haven't had any other issues in those homes, that's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor McLean?
Do we have much in reserve?
What we've targeted, if we put it, I'd have to pull those, each of the homes' reserves out, but yeah, we've put it into their capital reserves to help with their capital funding for the future, so. And we've been basing our capital budgets based on our BCA's for those buildings and stuff, so we're not, I'm going to see a ten-year forecast here, we're not seeing extravagant increases on the long-term care side for those capital budgets, so our reserves are in good shape for. What I'm more worried, sorry, what I'm more worried about is, this is what's happening with, you know, these being implemented in August, and now I've got to deal with these in two thousand and twenty in the budget for twelve months. So when I hear supplementary assessment stuff, that's good news in some ways, because it's going to, it's going to be needed to help what we're seeing here on these losses of provincial funding.
So do we need to be more, like, if something's changed in the CMI index, is it because we've got to be a little bit more accountable in our reporting to sort of say, okay, more accurate, is that what's changed? Is the detail of the reporting's changed in the sense that?
I'll let our administrators speak to this, but it just could be the makeup at the point in time of your clients, you could be blessed with, you know, not as acute clients, but I'll let one of the administrators, they work with this.
She comes up, I know that we've heard over the years that our makeup of people are needing more care, so I think the rationale of having more money for that is because it is one-time, our homes were more of a senior home versus more, there's more care needed, I guess that's my point, so.
That's probably problem wide, then they're all going up.
Yes, I was just going to say it's really reflective of the acuity across the province, so a lot of long-term care homes, their CMI was reduced because the, that's right.
Counselor Swobba?
Looking at the report and also the summary table that was provided as an attachment, and I'm interested in the Ontario Works in childcare. It shows a year-to-date actual of being seven hundred and six percent, so I imagine we got prepayment of something, and then the projected year-end variance in the table is slashed, so indicating there's none, but when I look at the report, it talks about a surplus of nineteen-three in Ontario Works and eleven thousand three hundred in childcare, so that would seem to me we're projecting a surplus, but then, of course, there's the potential funding shortfall, so I'd like to know, like, what is it that we received on the, to get it to seven hundred and six percent of year-to-date actual, and and why that number at the projected year-end variance is zero?
Seven hundred and six percent, sorry, where are you quoting?
That's in the summary table that was attached to the report, under Ontario Works and childcare. I believe it's page two of that. So the net budget is fourteen thousand, year-to-date actual is the end of thirteen thousand.
Okay, okay, this is the capital side, so that's just the capital, so it'd be a project that hasn't gone forward with, we have a budget, so it's just timing of capital projects, and I think there was a retaining wall or something earlier, so we're not even, I think we're pushing back even, so that, yeah, that's why that's so underspent there.
Okay, Kim?
Okay, I just wanted to provide a bit of an update to council with regard to prosecution. I had an opportunity to sit down with the prosecutor that we brought in-house earlier this spring, and Suzanne has been doing some interesting work to try and have a positive impact on the bottom line of the provincial offenses court. She's undertaken some training with the police that was very well-received to try to improve our conviction rate. She's also, as we had hoped, done a lot of work around pre-trial resolution, so that means that we're reducing the officers' time in attending. We're also able to move through things more quickly with the idea, I think, in the future that we'll be able to put more matters on the docket and have fewer court days, which will also reduce the expense side of the house. So I'm hoping that later this year, we'll be able to bring a report to you that talks in a little bit more detail about what we're seeing in that point, but preliminary numbers do look like this has been a positive move.
Kevin?
I want to go back to Counselor Swobba's sponsor. What that, sorry, that is, we cash flowed funding out to the Dundalk Early On Centre. We haven't claimed the revenue yet from the province, and that's why that expenditure looks a little out of whack.
Counselor Bart Nicky?
Through you, Mr. Warden, I am looking at the workers' compensation budget statement of a deficit of over a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and I realize today is PTSD awareness day, I'm not sure if everybody knows that, but I'm concerned about those numbers and how they're affecting. I know we elected to have a program in place this year, it looks like it's down a little bit, but I'm wondering if anybody would like to comment on that.
So it's maybe just a coincidence, but it's PTSD day today, and it's the first one in Canada, and from West Grey, I heard one of your gentlemen from the police force talk about it on CBC this morning. We are seeing an increased amount of PTSD claims through WSIB as a result of education, the social media, the campaigns that are out there that it's okay to not be okay, and I have a feeling that this is your biggest cost driver that you'll see at your municipalities, if you have professional services, if you have emergency services, and it's very, very difficult to understand, like we heard on the CBC this morning, it's not a broken leg, it's not a cut to your arm, it is something that is very difficult to treat. It's very expensive to treat, and that's one of the things that I think that you should be looking out for at your local municipality. We have a number of PTSD claims in the last since two thousand and sixteen, we've got about approximately eighteen, and that is, I think we're only at two for two thousand and nineteen, but I think it's going to be a roller coaster, I think there's going to be a lot of this coming through since the presumptive legislation came through, where this is now going to be covered by WSIB, I think we're going to see this a lot more. In coordination with the WSIB increasing, it also shows the importance of our programs, and I just want Kevin McNabb to talk a little bit about the programs, the peer support, which is also very expensive. The peers, not so much, but the psychologists and everything else that goes into it. Kevin, do you just have a minute to talk about that?
Yeah, so for our program here in the county, to really to prevent PTSD, and really, we talk about operational stress, because our goal is to prevent PTSD, that's really what we're working towards, and even though you see the rise in claims in two thousand and eighteen, to think that not all those people are off, we have a number of people that put in claims that receive that to get care, so there are people off, but there are people, success, like that come in, and we want them to get help and get a professional to get help, so. That's one thing that we've really focused on here, first of all, is prevention, so education to the paramedics, they've all received Road to Mental Readiness, which you've seen, they talked about that on CBC this morning, all our new staff are trained in that as well. Plus, they've also had two sessions of education over the last year that helps build up resiliency and their own self-coping mechanisms, and then from there, where we spend a lot of time is on early intervention, and from, we're doing some interesting novel things as far as when they do a call that potentially could be operational stress. There's notification to our peer support team and our supervisors and myself that we know that it happened, it's your proper follow-up. The goal of that is to get the peer support team involved, to have them discuss with the paramedics after the call, to debrief the call, and then from there, if they need further cares, to get them to the appropriate care, which is a psychologist where they can seek it, and really, the whole idea is to prevent PTSD. So that's, as far as prevention goes, we have a staff psychologist, which we call consulting psychologist. That person will be moving to a new one in July, they'll oversee the team, and they'll offer training to the team, and they'll do the quality assurance and the training, and also guide us in our best practices, so we're looking forward to that relationship starting up again. And then from there, just the ongoing care, is that, you know, if somebody is diagnosed with PTSD, how do we get them back to work, what type of programs we have put in place, accommodations for them to come back, those type of, making sure they get the ongoing care. So we're pretty well-versed, when we look at it, we look at, you know, prevention, early intervention, and then ongoing care, that's, we're trying to model that across the continuum of where the best practices are right now. Is there more to do? Yes, there is, but then we continue, I sit at a table with Aimo and WSIB, try to, you know, work through, you know, the best practices and try to improve it for the emergency services across the province. But I would say we're covering all the aspects that we can, and we're working hard in this area. I can't say enough about our human resources department, Lisa Keen, for sure, if you get to her, she's helped, helps you navigate the system, which I think a lot of municipalities, they struggle with that, about having paramedics navigate the system, and she's an expert in that now, and that if, when we get the paramedics connected to her, they make sure they get the care and gets it expedited.
Kevin? And thank you, Counselor Bart Nicky, for raising the fact that it is PTSD day today.
Just one other thing, the legislation doesn't describe it, but it really is a download from the province. Once they put PTSD into WSIB, previously, if you were a part-time employee, you would go off on sick benefits or disability, which was through the province. Now, once you have this legislation, WSIB, you're picking up all the costs at your local municipality. They don't talk a lot about that in the news, but essentially, that's what it is. These changes are really bringing those costs off.
Okay, any other questions? And I'll call the question, all those in favor, are there any opposed? That is carried, I just want to make a quick check, are we?
Anne Marie, Anne Marie, can you see if lunch is here? Lunch?
I think it is, I think I saw him coming.
Okay.
Okay, then we will take a break for lunch.